"Pleas, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Have a motion to open the meeting, please.
So may.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is an open meeting, it is being done virtually, and it is being recorded and/or being live. I'm not sure which one it is, but please act accordingly. Item number two, we're going to hold off and take out of order due to the fact that one of the representatives is not here on time. Item number three, a new public hearing will be held to petition of applicant and property owner CJ Shaughnessy Crane Service, Inc., the site plan review under section 10.6, to reuse the former Kohl's Department Store and turn it into a commercial warehouse with outside storage, construction vehicles. Equipment and pelletized equipment, site modifications consisting of security fencing, restriping, parking lot modifications, to loading doors, minor landscaping changes, and removal of approximately 150 feet of center landscaped median and technology center drive. The applicant is represented by Bowler Engineering. The property is located at 501 Technology Center Drive, Stoughton, Mass., assesses map 96 lot 52 in the Highway Business Zoning District. Can the applicant and/or his representatives please come up? You ready to go? Okay. Go ahead, if you guys would like to explain your project. You guys like to explain your project, go ahead.
Sure, yep. I'm not sure, is Barry on, do we know? Is Barry Crimmens?
Barry, can you hear us? Not very well, sorry. Some deep technical difficulties. We never use this library very much, so I don't know where the sound is.
Long and wide, too. Increase. Craig, increase. You see this, you speak at thing.
Barry, can you talk?
Testing one, two.
Okay. We are good to go now. Your project is up, we've taken you out of work.
Oh, okay.
Barry, do you want to, do you want to kick us off and just give a quick overview, or?
Sure. I, Bill, I can't, I can't see who's at the meeting, so could, I don't know, are you supposed to take all local members to the meeting?
We've already started the meeting. Rich Perry is the only member absent.
Okay. You have four members present?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. So, for the record, Attorney Barry Crimmens of 909 Washington Street, Stoughton, here on behalf of the Alpex CJ Shaughnessy Crimmins Services, Inc. I'm getting, Bill, I'm getting a lot of feedback, are you taking that as well, or no?
No.
Okay, then I'll just continue. Maybe if I lower my volume, it won't reverberate so much. I apologize, I'm not able to attend tonight in person, but I had hip replacement surgery last week, so I am zooming in from home. The project, the application before you is an application for site plan approval for the property of 501 Technology Center Drive in Armstrong. It is the property that, I mean, recently has a cold, larynx problem. And Shaughnessy is looking to move a portion of their operations in this location to complement their existing operation in Aton, Aton and Estillapack. As I indicated, that's a plan approval. The proposal used by Shaughnessy, they both an indoor and outdoor storage facility, was approved by the issuance of a special permit from zoning board appeal back in November of last year. And that special permit was recorded in December of last year. Shaughnessy, thereafter, we had a pre-bidling meeting with Tom Snapp to review the site plan. In early February, we filed the site plan approval application in the site plans that Bill has up on the screen. So with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think, I'm assuming our project engineer from Bowler is there, either Randy Myron or perhaps someone else from Bowler. So I think what I'd like to do, in the interest of time, is to turn it over to our project engineer to go over the site plan with the members.
Thank you, thanks Barry. So, yeah, just by way of introductions, I'm Randy Myron at Bowler. Also with me is Jamie Shaughnessy of CJ Shaughnessy Crane Service. And as Barry mentioned.
Can you hear me, Barry? Bill, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Did he?
Can anybody still hear me?
The Mew worked for the Echo, but now we're.
I can hear you, Barry. I'm awake. Okay, thanks, Chris. Dan, can you hear me? Is anybody there?
We can hear you.
Barry, you did a good job, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So, as I indicated, I'd like to turn it over to our project engineer to go over the site plan details with the board.
Thank you, great. Thank you, Barry. Can you hear me, Barry? Great, thanks. Yeah, so just to, just to go over the site, the existing site, as Barry mentioned, it's the Kohl's, the Kohl's property. It's about a 12-acre property. The Kohl's building itself is around 88,000 square feet. It has three driveways on Technology Center Drive, and there's some existing landscaping and parking. I think in total, there's like 433 parking spaces that are out there today. There is also, there's obviously some existing landscaping throughout the parking area, and then there's some wetlands. If you're looking at the plan on the screen now to the left, or to the south, you can see that line that kind of infringes upon the building on the left-hand side, that's actually the 100-foot wetland buffer associated with the wetlands. And then the, on the opposite side of the site, to the north, would be the two restaurants, Olive Garden and Smokey Bones. But as Barry mentioned, yeah, really the project before you is for the site plan approval application for really repurposing the building for the Shaughnessys. The building footprint itself will remain the same. There's no changes to the footprint. There are some overhead doors being added to accommodate some accessways for their equipment. But beyond that, the building will remain as it does today. There's also some limited parking improvements and some exterior improvements being proposed. There's a new eight-foot-high privacy fence surrounding the limits of their, I call it their yard or their, the area where they would store the outdoor equipment. It's kind of represented by like a dashed line on the plan in front of you. And we've positioned that fence, it's been positioned along Technology Center Drive to kind of go in back of that existing landscaping that's already there. If folks are familiar with the site, there's a nice landscape buffer along the front, along the front of the site. And it's really, you don't really, if you're a vehicle passing on Technology Center Drive, you really don't really see into the site much. So the plan is to put that new eight-foot-high privacy fence in back of that existing landscaping. And then along the north side, that fence, the fence that faces the two restaurants, it would be supplemented with some additional landscaping that's not there today. There's a mixture of shrubs and grasses, just to kind of break it up, and from, to make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing. But beyond the addition of the fence, again, some limited striping, parking lot improvements, there's some ADA improvements, just to make it compliant with the ADA code. There are new erosion sediment controls surrounding the limit of the work of the project. There is a small portion of the work within the 100-foot wetland buffer, just by a few feet. We actually had a discussion with Jim Conlin, the Conservation Commission agent, on that, and he is okay with that work, provided we provide a double row of silt fence, as well as make sure that the contractor doesn't put any soil or stockpile areas within the 100-foot buffer. And then beyond that, from a stormwater management standpoint, we're really just proposing to maintain the stormwater management system that's out there today. There's, there's no increase in impervious surfaces beyond what exists today, so there'll be no increase in stormwater runoff rates or volumes. So the plan is to just maintain that existing system. It's a series of catch basins, manholes, underground drainage pipes, and eventually it discharges over to the, to the wetlands. So we will be maintaining that as part of the project. And then beyond that, we're also proposing to take out a portion of the median within Technology Center Drive. It's a little tough to see on the screen in front of you, but there's a portion of that area that we're proposing to remove. And that's really just in order to accommodate truck access in and out of the facility. Yep, there we go, right there. And then beyond that, that's kind of a brief, high-level overview of what's being proposed. I guess I'd be happy to answer any questions that you folks might have. And we have Jamie here also from CJ Shaughnessy, in case there's questions on the operations.
Let Scott speak, and then we'll kind of get into that.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Craig Horstfall, Assistant Town Engineer. As you know, we prepared a technical review letter for this project. It's been distributed to you all. A few things that we had noted in the review letter that we requested from the applicant would be a truck turning diagram to show how trucks maneuver into that entrance in front of the existing building, where they're showing removal of the median. We just want to make sure that they are taking enough median out to swing the trucks out. I think they have to swing out a bit to the left in order to pull in. But we want to make sure they're not taking too much. So we want to see how the trucks maneuver through that, that area there. And sticking with that area, since there will be more truck traffic in that location, heavy vehicles pulling in and out of the site, the area where they're removing the median, we need them to call that out as full-depth reconstruction. So they're pulling out a landscaped island, doing full-depth reconstruction in that median area, and then a full mill in overlay from curb to curb within the limits of the modified islands, so that we have a new section of pavement right, right in there, so.
Is that going to be all the way across the whole road?
Both lanes, yes. We requested some bollards be added at the, at the building, at the overhead door locations, just to protect the building while the trucks or vehicles are moving in and out. If you look to the right of the screen, about midway up, where there's a crosswalk shown going across the existing driveway, on the restaurant side of the property, it continues on to some concrete walkways and things. But on the Shaughnessy side of the project, it just sort of goes to a landing area. I think it'd be a good idea to put a, an accessible ramp at that location, and a walkway that kind of goes behind that curb, the curbing that they're installing, so that pedestrians can get to the parking field. Bill, you want to talk about the landscaping?
Yeah. Bill Roth, Town Planner, the town of Stoughton. The proposed landscape area, as you can see in my comment number six, that's adjacent to the fence facing the restaurant, area's about four feet wide, and it's narrow. There are striped areas that they're proposing on just striping the asphalt where a parking space was. And so there are, I'll go to the... So it's, they're proposing on just striping these areas here. If you can see where my cursor is, I'm recommending, I'm recommending that those be cut out and added as landscaping. It'll actually help with their, to fully guarantee that there's no impervious area being added. Plus, it will provide greater planning area for more of a canopy-type tree. And then, so they would keep the four feet, and then, you know, there would be where those parking spaces once were, would be landscaping.
That's comment number, wait.
Then the other thing, we need to know about the, seems like trash and dumpsters are always something that we ask for. There are two large trash compactors, we're pretty not, we don't know if they're planning on being used, or if not, they're being sold or whatnot. So we need kind of clarification, and if they are proposing alternate trash means in those compactors, which I think are mainly cardboard, probably not into their, what their business is, we will need to identify where the pads are, there's Board of Health requirements, those sorts of things. And...
Maybe I'll just end off with the stormwater management system. There's really no impact from this project on the existing system. They're, they're proposing to not increase any impervious cover, so they're keeping the existing system. However, there is an infiltration basin and a couple of Vor Technic units on the site that need to be identified on the site plan. And then the O and M plan for the property needs to be updated to reflect the current ownership and indicate all the BMPs on site. And then we don't have any records that this site has ever, the stormwater management system has ever been maintained, so you may not be able to get any. At the end of the construction period here, we typically request that all the, all the stormwater management gets cleaned. You can submit records, and then it kind of resets where you're at with the O and M. So moving forward, you can just continue on with the scheduled inspection and maintenance.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have one more thing, and I know that it was emailed. The operator, Darden of Olive Garden, has submitted a comment letter and an exhibit regarding a crossover parking access agreement. And so I just wanted to make sure that that's, you know, submitted for the record. I know that the person, I think from Darden, might be online, and I know that the property owner of 401 is here. And I know that that will be a topic of, seems like parking access, you know, those are a topic of discussions of several of these projects tonight. So, but I did want to, for the record, that it, it, they do, Darden has submitted the letter. You were emailed it, the applicant and their engineers, and were emailed it also. And it just feels that, that the proposal doesn't, they feel does not comply. But when you get to the public portion, I'm sure that.
We'll address.
I just wanted to, for the record, that it's, it is in the file and was submitted.
So I have a couple of questions, a couple of things. The, on the landscaping plan, just put a secondary plan together with its size trees and the types of trees you're looking to put around the property. I did take a drive by the site. One of the things we had discussed at the preliminary hearing was the fencing and the type of fencing you're going to use along the main road there. We talked about it being a privacy fence, and that was going to kind of get hidden by the trees, but in the wintertime, it's pretty sparse. I mean, you can kind of see right into that property. Summertime may be different, but right now, if you drive by there, it's pretty sparse, you can see in. So the type of fence or what you're using is going to be kind of important, because it's really close to the road. And if you just put up an eight-foot chain-link fence, it's going to look like, you know, a construction site. And I know basically that's what it is, but we have to kind of take, take into account what we're doing as far as our street-facing areas. And that area was never really set up to be just a street construction site, not like an industrial type of setup. So I'd like to hear what you're proposing for a fence, and then maybe kind of figure out which way we want to go. And do you need this privacy? I know you're looking for security, but does it need to be a fully a privacy fence that's along there? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, one thing I do always like to highlight, and maybe we can include some of the photos in our next, next submission, is when we refer to it as a construction site, I'd like to show you some pictures of our existing progress.
I didn't mean it that way, but it's going to look like a construction site. If you put up an eight-foot chain-link fence with a bunch of slats in it, that's what it's going to forever look like as a construction site. You know, I mean, no getting around it. So I was trying to see if we can go to something, something that's different. And if it doesn't have to be privacy or completely blocked off, there's other types of, you know, open type of fences that we might be able to use that provide you security, but may not be so obtrusive to be right on top of the road that way.
We did provide a detail, or a photo of the fence on C-901. So if you folks have any feedback on that, that would be appreciated.
C, which one?
C-901. Kind of in the bottom of the page.
That, it's exactly what I was trying to avoid, is that, that's what I'm saying. If we did that type of chain-link fence with those privacy slats in it, that being that close to the road, it's going to forever look like a construction site. Even with the trees that are there, like I say, in the summertime, it's one thing, but in the wintertime, right now, it's very sparse over there. You can kind of see through everything that's there, because a lot of the bushes are deciduous, they don't have any leaves on them, so you're just looking right through them. And like I said, I don't even mind it if it's, if it's an open type of fence, that maybe the slats aren't on it, and it's more open, and you can see into it. But if it's a, I know you look for security, but I didn't know whether a visual, whether you're looking to block everybody from seeing what you're doing, too.
Yeah, no, actually, I mean, we would be open to add an open fence. The privacy was more so, that was a zoning board requirement, but it's also, if it's shielded by landscaping, then it's fine, so.
And I think what's going up along, you know, maybe up along the parking lot that's, you know, facing Olive Garden, you may be able to do something like this, maybe only on a six-foot level. But out there on the main road, I think we should go with something that's, you know, we've looked at some other types of fences, whether they're open, open pecky type of fences, or, you know, old wrought iron type, that is maybe six-foot high, that have some spaces in them, and you can see into it, yeah, but they actually look presentable, instead of being an eight-foot-high thing on top of you as you're coming down the road.
Yeah, we can certainly look into that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Anybody else on board have any other questions?
Yeah, just to, just to take up on that discussion, I think what we want you to do is to come back with us and impress us. Impress us with a landscape design. You know, you got a theme coming into that technology park, which is quite nice. I know they messed it up further up, but impress us. Do a nice fencing, you know, berm things if you have to, you know. Give us something that's really going to look like, because the town of Stoughton wants to go to this impressive landscaping, buildings that people say, oh, yeah, they, they really do a top-notch job over there. That's what we want.
Yeah, absolutely.
What's, what will be the hours of operation?
We have hours listed on the permit, do we have that? Our normal hours of operation during the day are usually between 7:00 and 4:00 p.m., 7:00 and 5:00 p.m. But I know the permit has us listed, I believe it's from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., just in the event that we'll have trucks.
Deliveries and...
Yeah, exactly.
And will there be actual big 50-ton cranes be on, on the property as well?
There may be a crane from time to time offloading a truck, but this is more so for trailer parking. And when I say trailers, it's mostly flatbed, flatbed trailers, it's not, it's not big box trailers.
Yeah, it looks like the hours of operation, this EBA permit has the hours of ops from Monday through Sunday, 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
And just for the record, when I say there'd be a crane on site offloading a piece of equipment, when we store something either in the warehouse or in the yard, and it comes in on a trailer, our, it's our mobile cranes, it's not, sometimes people confuse those for, for like a tower crane that you see in the city, but these are over-the-road cranes.
Yeah, so you, like rooftop units, things like that, that you can be offloading in a truck and storing?
Exactly.
I actually have a couple of questions. The, in the back, south, southeast, southwest corner, there was a farmer's sign there from Kohl's, and it's up around 10 feet high. And I don't know, I take it it's hollow in the center. Is there any plans to cap that off, remove it, or do you plan on putting a big Shaughnessy? Is there any plans to cap that off, remove it, or do you plan on putting a big Shaughnessy sign up at some point?
So, we don't know what we're planning to do in terms of a sign, but that existing location, they took down the sign because the sign had some damage, and I think it had something to do with drainage or water at the base of it. So, the previous owners, they were actually in the process of getting a sign re-permitted along the highway, right at the top center of the screen there, along those parking spots. But when we entered the process to buy it, they held off on permitting, and it's kind of just sat there. We don't have any immediate plans to do anything with a pylon sign, but if we did, I don't think it would go in the spot that is existing.
Okay, my concern is, again, if someone was to get in there, stupid kid, stop looking, okay, which down the hole, so to speak, even though they have to go up eight feet to get to it, some way of capping that off to prevent...
Yeah, I'm sure we could, I'm sure we can do that, I don't think that should be an issue.
The other question I have is, seeing that your other property is in Avon, and it'd be real convenient for your vehicles to go through BJ's, even though, in a sense, you're trespassing. Unless you have a BJ's, you can stop in there, but I hope that you don't have no plans of your commercial trucks. All right.
No, and we had that conversation in zoning board as well, because I think there is actually even a sign up there that says no truck access unless it's Amazon or something. But, it's a windy road to begin with, our trucks would have difficulty getting through there. And that's really the reason why we're proposing taking out some of that median, so we can come in and take a right into the parking lot, as opposed to coming from that other direction.
Okay, again, like I said, I could see, better yet, one of your cranes would have difficulties cutting through there.
Oh, absolutely.
But, okay, and then the, you already talked about the curb cut. Catch basins to catch any oil leakage from any vehicles?
He said there's vortex systems in the system.
What's that?
He already said there's a vortex in that.
Okay, all right. And, last but probably not least, when you bring equipment in, it's typically on pallets or whatever, no pallets to be left outside the gate for free wood or whatever?
Oh, yeah, no.
No, no, I just, it's, people have been doing that on Turnpike Street, they pile them up and...
Yeah. No, we have wood dumpsters, and we dispose of all extra, all extra pallets.
Actually, prior to you purchasing the property, I took a ride, because I heard this was coming. And I saw where your dumpsters are, and they're very well hidden. They're tucked in the corner there, and, you know, it'd be hard for us to see it. What I did see was the temporary chain-link fencing that's up there now, cutting by Olive Garden and all that. Is that, for the most part, where you're planning on putting your permanent fence?
So, the, where the fence is now is a little bit further in from what is shown on this plan.
Right.
But, yeah, we originally were hesitant on the, on the construction fence, just because we knew a fence was a major portion of this conversation, and specifically the material. But Jason Doherty from our team, our construction manager, who couldn't be here tonight unfortunately, he checked with, I believe it was Jack McCormick, is that his last name? Building inspector Jeff?
Eric.
Yeah, wrong name, I apologize. He discussed that with Jack on placement and style, and given that it was temporary, he was okay that it was a chain link.
But what I did notice is, if you look at the top section, I guess west, if you, if they were to come in there and park, it's actually kind of like a dead-ended area. But that's, that's their issue, not our issue.
Which...
You see where you have, there's a grass strip going, if you come down about six or eight inches, that grass strip in the front of your building, all the way out towards Olive Garden?
Yep.
And then, see how there's like a T there? If people were to use those parking spots, it's almost like a dead-ended area.
I guess I'm having trouble exactly identifying exactly which spots you're...
Peter, actually, all of those parking splines to the right of the fence that they're proposing are dead ends. So, they're leaving the last space, they show it as striped, we're requesting it to be landscaped, but they're essentially just dead-end parking stalls and have, I don't know, six or eight spaces.
Okay.
Yep.
And also just...
But that landscaped area will allow for you to back out and turn around.
Well, that was my, you know, it's...
Yeah, if you pull in headfirst into that space, it's to give you enough room to back out and swing the other way.
That's why they're striped.
Yeah.
If all the spaces are full and you pull down, then you have to back out all the way.
I guess a question...
Anybody else have any questions?
A question that I just have, that, the landscaping comment there, I know the striping, as you mentioned, was the purpose, was so people could back out. Sir, when you say replace that with landscaping, how would that work? Maybe I'm just not following.
You'd cut out the pavement and put a landscape island there?
Landscaping, that's the...
So cars...
Curb them.
Yeah.
They're able to pull on it?
No. You'd have landscaping there instead of where the striping is.
Cut it out, put curbing, create an island, basically create an island where the striped areas are, create islands right there.
Okay.
And they'll be contiguous with the, where they abut the four-foot plant, or they'll all be just contiguous?
Yeah, they'll join in with that four-foot strip.
So, how would the car in the last space now pull out?
The car doesn't pull into that area. That's the reason why you have that space there, because you have the backup area that goes to the island. Your engineer could probably show you really quickly on the plan.
Okay, yeah, we'll discuss afterwards.
One last question is the lighting in the parking lot in on the building?
Yep, so we would be putting, and do we have details on the lighting?
Yeah, so for lighting, we, there's only, so all the lights would, all the lights, the site parking lot lights that are out there today, that would currently, they would remain as part of the project, with the exception of, there's one parking lot light that's in one, in front of an overhead door, that would be removed. And then, there'd be a few new building-mounted lights above the overhead doors. And really, that's it for lighting improvements. And all those building lights, certainly downward-facing, dark sky compliant, yeah.
Would you also be adding cameras in the area for security?
Oh, absolutely.
Anybody else?
Anybody from the public like to speak on this project? Excuse me? Does anybody from the public would like to speak about this project? There's a microphone, right there.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my name is Benita, I'm the owner of the property of Olive Garden.
Okay.
And Olive Garden is a triple net lease tenant at that site.
Okay.
I mean, this is really kind of overwhelming for me, because I'm not, I'm not an engineer or anything, and we basically didn't get any notice much about this. We just got notice from J. Hennessy about two days ago about what the plans look like. And as far as talking to Olive Garden representative, I think Will Thorpe, I don't know, he was gonna, he was gonna be on, online.
It appears he is on there, Will Thorpe is online.
Is he, is Will Thorpe on, or?
Yes, Will, you can speak.
Okay, hi, Will, okay. All right, so Will Thorpe represents Darden. And, like I said, we basically did not have any input on whatever the plans are being made. I don't think anybody spoke to Olive Garden about the impact of this project, how it's going to affect the business there. I'm sure they would want to do that. So, what I would like to know is, I mean, yeah, I appreciate very much the planning board being, doing all this due diligence, and it's really appreciated. However, I would like to know, you know, if Olive Garden and I, representing the owner of the property, we will have a chance to review this and get some input perhaps, and maybe, you know, kind of refine things a little bit. So, I think that's what I have to say. And, I don't know, Will, do you have anything to say about this?
Yeah, I think we need to reiterate that, you know, our main concern is these areas where the fence is going to be used in the parking lot. We believe that it violates Section 2.1 and Section 5.4 of the Declaration of Covenant and Deedsment for the shopping center. And it will have a direct impact on the parking for our business. You know, our business, we don't have any, enough parking places, our business suffers. And, you know, I've shown the plan to our operators and their concern, because we have cross-parking rights on parking fields at Coles, as it's called in the site plan, parking around our previous buildings, there's not a lot of parking there. And I believe the building behind us, or it's like a vacant property, but whatever impact it has to the state, that's a major concern for us, that there will be enough parking for customers. So, that's really what we wanted to reiterate during this meeting.
Thank you.
Also, one more thing, Will, as far as the trucks being going in and out of the call area, you know, are they going to impact, you know, the noise level?
Hold the microphone to your mouth, sir.
Yeah, are they going to impact, you know, the restaurant in terms of, you know, noise level and in and out and what? I don't know, if you could explain that, you know, how does that work in terms of your traffic?
So, this is a conversation that we had at zoning board, what's on that? Fortunately, our hours of operation are directly opposite the restaurants. So, the main truck traffic is really, you know, seven A.M. to one or two P.M. during the weekdays, whereas there could be a minor overlap during your lunch hours during the week, but in the evenings and on the weekends, there would be, there would be no overlap. And there's also, compared to the level of truck traffic that's in there now, there's actually not really going to be much more activity. It really primarily is going to be used as a storage site, so it's less of a truck depot and more of just a storage facility. And, yeah, truthfully, there won't be much more activity than there is currently.
Is there any trucks that are going to go through Technology Drive itself into, in and out of your lot, your property?
Yeah, no, absolutely, but it just, it won't be many, maybe five or 10 trucks per day. And compared to the levels that are there now, it, it won't be, it won't be much of a difference.
Is there any other way to have the trucks go in, in and out?
Yeah, so...
Without, you know...
So, and I know we didn't point it out too closely up on the screen, but we're, I'll explain it. I'll just, I'll get up and point it. Can you scroll down a little bit? Yep, can you scroll down a little? So, this is the median, this median is currently existing. We're proposing to remove it so that our trucks have the ability to make a right-hand turn into this entrance right here. So, this will be the primary truck entrance. Now, that's not to say that a truck will never go in this way. I mean, there already are today trucks that do go in this way, but we'll use our best efforts to use this entrance. Yeah.
Are you going to have a gate at the other end of that road that you'd be able to access in?
So... Yeah, our plans currently, our plans currently show gates here, here, one here and one there.
Okay.
Also, I have a question in terms of the, there's a protected area that, for parking for the restaurant, and I don't know if you have a record of that, which is, you know, the parking that is according to agreements that that parking is basically to, for use for all the three owners of properties, called Olive Garden and then the other property?
Smokey Bones.
Smokey Bones. That, that area basically cannot be changed without, all the parties agree. So, I don't know if your plans do affect that area?
Is Phil, or Dan?
Yes, sir.
Dan?
Go ahead.
Phil, I'd like, I'd like to address that matter, but I'd like, if there's anyone else in the audience that has any comment, I'll weigh. But if not, I can address, I can address that issue now.
Barry, why don't you just address it now, and I'll bring up anybody else that wants to come in.
Um, I mean, we could talk, Will is here because he represents Darden.
Okay.
You know, and they want to protect that area. So, Will, are you able to discuss that now, or?
Go ahead, there it is.
All right, why don't you say what you're going to say?
All right, thank you. So, we received a copy of Mr. Thorpe's letter this morning, bill of ownership, as he mentioned, as we appreciate. And we're more than willing to work with Olive Garden and anyone else out there to coexist peacefully, coactively, and towards everyone's best interest. That said, what I do want to point out to the board is, it's not up to the planning board to resolve private property disputes. It would require that the board review and interpret legal documents, and then come to legal conclusions. So, that certainly is not the domain of the planning board, and certainly not in the context of site plan review. And I say that for a couple of reasons. One is, it would give theing a butter who potentially might raise such private property issues an unfair advantage to bring those, serving the permit in front of us and potentially delay the permitting of the project. Secondly, there are other avenues for any potential of butter who would feel a breach in compliance of the planning board approving the site plan to pursue appropriate remedies. And that would either be to appeal the decision of the planning board, should the planning board approve the site plan approval, pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 17, and/or 16, and jump to really broad clerical reviews through to the court. And so, as you can see, these are legal issues that are not frankly properly before the planning board to be resolved. And I would suggest, if the board had any questions, and I would guide, that they could seek an opinion from town council as to whether or not those issues would be, would be properly before the planning board.
Barry. Barry.
They would not... Yep.
Okay, just for the record, I have already spoken to town council on this and one other project. Your education was well received, thank you very much, and I appreciate it. We're going to move on from this, and I believe at this point, unless anybody else has anything to discuss about this project, if you would like to ask for a continuance, you could do so now, and then we could move on.
There, there isn't no one else speaking?
I don't believe any, anybody else wanna speak in this project?
I think the person from Darden may wanna say something, I don't know. I, I know that, I, I know that-
Mr. Thorpe, did you, Mr. Thorpe, did you wanna say anything?
Yeah, I, I, you know, Barry, I, I agree, I would like to come to the table. You know, we've completed all this and worked together because, you know, it's all Darden's position that having any business or pretty much business in this state, so having a state space, I think that would help with our business, but yeah, we, we, we still have concerns over the parking and, you know, if we wanna take, take anything offline out of the meeting and discuss that, we're happy.
I'd like to go with the other stuff.
Yeah.
Um, Dan, I think I'll, since the client is, is there, I mean, I will refer to how much time, I recognize things they need to make the necessary changes to the plan that were requested, both by questions that came up on the members as well as incorrect and bill technical review memo. I know Bill is out, I believe, or waiting for one of the meetings in April, so I'll, I'll let you folks determine what things worth the test for.
Okay. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I did wanna mention, 'cause it was, um, the notice was under the law sent to whoever gets the assessing bill and 401 Technology Center Drive was sent to Olive G L L C in Brooklyn, New York, because that is who receives, that's who receives the thing. They received a certified letter. I do not know if they have, the certified letter came back, but I'm just saying that they said no one was noticed, the property owner was let notice, or based on the assessor records. So that was done. I did also talk with town council this morning, 'cause we talked about another project that we'll be hearing tonight. And some of what Barry said is what was told, however, there is a caveat with this one in that the other two approvals would have met, needed to meet the parking requirement. In order to do that, that's why, that's clearly why a parking agreement was, that a parking agreement was done. So from a planning standpoint, I'm gonna look at the seating capacity of the two restaurants, find out how many parking spaces are required total, add up all the spaces on Smokey Bones, former Smokey Bones, Olive Garden, and then the parking that is here, and at a minimum, I feel whatever that minimum parking requirement is per the code is what needs to make sure that is provided. And that may have been done, I'm not sure, but, so, so I will, you know, that's something that we will look at. That's our minimum threshold, so.
Okay.
And I will be gone on the 10th, and so I would recommend if a continuance, especially to try to, you know, obviously town, get town council's opinion on whatnot, I would, I would recommend the April 24th hearing date.
Does that work for you guys?
Can I just have one?
Sure.
Could you, when you're doing all your new plan and stuff, could you give us a, a layout of what you expect, how the traffic pattern's gonna be, where the trailers are gonna be stored, you know, what, what your thought process is of what you need for space in that area?
Absolutely.
What you need.
Absolutely. So I know and I believe that was point one in the, in the memo here, and I was gonna say we, we have scaled out drawings of all our trucks and trailers and we can put a diagram together and include that in the plans.
You, do you have an idea of potentially how many trailers will be sitting on the lot? I realize that-
He's gonna do a plan of it.
Okay.
He's gonna have a plan inside the next meeting. Okay, so Barry, do you wanna ask for a continuance or not? For the 20, 24th, I guess.
Please, did I, can, did April 24th work for everything?
Yes.
Motion to continue to April 24th.
Second. Okay, so we're accepting, we're accepting their request for a continuance to April 24th. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, gentlemen.
Feel better, Barry?
Thank you.
Easy on the painkillers.
Item, item number four. Item number four, a new public hearing will be held at the petition of the applicant property owner, S N Square Realty, Inc., 810 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. for a site plan review under Section 10.6 to renovate the former Stoughton Trust Company building.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the item number two, everyone is here.
Okay. Item number two, a continued public hearing will be held at the petition of applicant Gene Caesar, 1141 Central Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072, represented by J.K. Holmgren Engineering LLC, Rockton, Mass. for site plan review under Section 10.6.2 for the proposed development of 1,500 square foot building with associated infrastructure, site grading and landscaping. The proposed use of the building is for an office and garage to house the applicant's fuel trucks. A special permit per Section 9.3.4, Point F.7, and 10.5 for accessory storage commercial vehicles, which are more than three-quarter tonnes required. The project is located at 19 Morton Square, assesses map 54 Lot 407 in the Stoughton Center District, Flex Zoning District. This is a continued meeting from 9:26, 24, 12:19, 24, and 2:13, 25.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney John McDermott, on behalf of the applicant ECF Caesar's Trust. With me is Scott Rogers from J.K. Holmgren Engineering. Mr. Caesar.
To get started off on the meeting, as per you heard, you okay? One second, okay. As per your conversation earlier, part of our discussion earlier was with town council. The legal matter of access right now is, I'm not gonna get into the legal as far as, 'cause this board doesn't have the purview to get into it, so there's no sense in having all of the discussion out here. You guys are gonna need to go through that. If the board does, does decide to have a vote tonight and we do approve it, then the, you know, the legal court of appelle, of appeal for us or legal courts from that point on, for you guys, there's gonna be a remedy at that point if, if, if in fact we do decide to approve or disapprove the project tonight. But really, when it comes down to it, we have a site plan review process that's in our guidelines that basically talks about the criteria for the zoning bylaw under special permits, and we cannot, you know, that part of it, the legal part of it, is not part of our venue. And, you know, Barry kinda spoke about it at the last one, you heard it, and we just, we just not gonna get into it, 'cause it's not worth our time tonight to get into it. I would like to get into the project and discuss what we've discussed from the project to this point, so we can further on go from there. So at that point, I'm gonna start off with town staff and then we can go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, it was discussed regarding the several items. I know that there was some landscaping on the one side that several members did not agree with. The applicant actually has revised that and he can kinda talk of what he's done. There was a requirement for a chain link slatted fence along the top of the wall adjacent to the thing. They've revised the plans and provided that along the retaining wall, along Morton Square, whatever you wanna call it, driveway, ac- access, whatever, private way, that a guardrail be there, and you also wanted a guardrail adjacent to the property, to the Murphy Oil property, and they've, and they've proposed those. So everything that we discussed last time, they've, they've changed the landscaping, they've added the various guardrails on the thing from a site plan standpoint, and as you said, you know, we make a determination, you know, they have-
Can we put the, can we put the plan, yeah?
I, I just put the colored plan up.
Okay.
I figured that was, the illustrative plan is probably easier to see, so that's why I put that up. And so that's, you know, they've, they've addressed all of the things. If you so choose, there is a recommended set of conditions that is in your packet. Some of the things that I did address are noteworthy, that are different. The special conditions, that the use be limited to two fuel trucks and said trucks shall be stored within the garage at all times. The applicant needs to clean the drainage system. The final as built needs to be required. And one of the changes that I'm recommending is condition to the landscape bond. I'm recommending, we're seeing a lot of these landscape bonds are extremely costly. Mortality rate of 50% is, is rare, unlikely. Normally, it's a, it's a handful of things. I'm recommending that a, that the landscape bond be 50% of the cost of the install cost. So, and that's reflected-
As opposed to 100%.
As opposed to 100%. We have some landscape bonds that are $65,000 and, and that's just-
I agree, and there was a reason for that. If you look around town on some of the older projects, some of these projects were not maintained.
Right.
We, we asked for a lot of landscaping to go in, but people never decide to put anything to irrigation and to maintain them.
Right, so-
And if we don't have something that does push back on that, that's part of the reason.
I, I did not do this in a work session, I'm just letting you know, that I, I'm recommending 50% from, from your staff's point of view. As, as a landscape architect, 50% mortality rate is extremely rare, even, you know, even the worst case we had was the Cumberland Farms was about 30, maybe 20 or 30%. So I feel that the town is still protected and we're not having these 30, 60, 80,000-dollar landscape bonds, which are just, just very difficult when, when you're, you're trying to leverage a project. So that's my recommendation, is 50%.
Okay.
With that, you have the recommended conditions.
We can make a decision on that.
Could I make a suggestion that perhaps in the beginning, we, we bonded for a certain amount, once they've installed the landscaping?
No, 'cause then it's, the installation's part of getting their occupancy permits, so there's no sense in stepping down a bond at that point.
Right.
I was gonna say maybe adjusted it.
No.
I mean, the whole idea of the bond is that they maintain it, that the stuff grows and then a year later, it's lived through a season and-
Right. We don't use the bond to saying, oh, you know, you haven't installed your landscape, you can do a bond and, and get your occupancy. So we don't do that. This is, landscaping is already installed and inspected by myself.
Okay.
And so this is just, this is the bond portion.
It's a replacement, yeah.
It's hard enough to track bonds, as you, last meeting, we were looking at a bond that was from 2019, so.
But if, if we're gonna track them, whether we're tracking a 30,000, 60,000, we're still tracking.
Yeah, but trying to, trying to reduce midway, i- i- it's very, you know, it's very cumbersome.
It'd be more complicated, I understand.
I, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Greg?
No.
No. Okay. Does anybody on the board have any other questions? Anybody from the audience have any questions? Sure.
There's a button, it's red in there. Please identify this. Good evening. My name is Bill Zoll, representing Murphy Oil. Inasmuch as we were requested to submit a response to the petition, the petitioner's issue of, of legal access, I'd like to take a few minutes, and I understand that you've been advised by town council that you need not consider that. However, and I will not go through the whole presentation, obviously, I admit that was made clear. However, town council's response and, and a letter that we received tonight at 10 past 5 from, from petitioner's council again, drives home the fact that in fact, this, within this board's purview is to at least ensure that there is, there is some indication of ownership and, and legal rights and legal access to the property. And as you, in, in the presentation that we made and the paper that we submitted yesterday morning, it is clear that no one has rights to the driveway that they are, are expecting to utilize for this property. Is it possible to bring up C3? As you saw from the argument that I made in our submission yesterday morning, there is no legal basis for them to have access through Murphy Oil's driveway, whether it be on the, as they say, the express rights that they believe appear in the deeds.
I understand something, sorry, and I'm, I'm not trying to discount, I know you need to, to get, get out what you're gonna say and I'll let you finish that, but understand something. You have one lawyer saying one thing, you've got another lawyer saying another thing. I see an access road that gives them, you know, their, their property, embuts a way or a square or a, a labeled street, okay, that can get access to their properties, and at that point in time, I can't, I'm not, I'm not an attorney nor am I a judge to be able to sit here and say, you're right or he's right. And I, and I'm just, I'm trying to be honest with you, it's not our purview to do that. So I understand you have an argument that says you're right and he has an argument that says he's right. I, we can't be the judge on that.
I understand. The point that I, that I'm trying to make, and I think is very important, however, is that, is that the responsibility of the board is to in fact establish at least a baseline, okay, to, so that there's no futility in granting this and then having it linger in the courts afterwards, efforts been granted, and-
And to be honest with you, as from a layman's point of view, I agree with you. And to me, I, I haven't gotten to my next point yet, what I was gonna ask them to do, but I'll, I'll let you finish your argument, is that I don't believe that this should go forward to a vote, but that's gonna be up to them. Okay? That's my opinion, because there is a dispute, and I, in the past, our history has always been that we try to resolve any type of encroachment types of things in the past before it gets pushed by this board, because I don't believe we should be voting on something that really has this type of a dispute going on, so. But that, that being said, I'm not the attorney from the town, the town advised me that unless we have a reason for not doing it, and I haven't seen a, I sat, I see both sides, I'm not gonna be a judge, the board here can read, they know where they are, I'll let them decide whether we're gonna, how we're gonna pass it, I'm gonna go through the different processes. However, I, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna be the judge on this situation.
Understood, I appreciate that, thank you. The reason I asked to, was it C3? Apologize, excuse me, C4, apologize. The reason I asked to bring up sheet C4 is very simply to show that, as you see from the petitioner's council's submission of, of 5 o'clock tonight, that they believe they have legal access even if they do not have legal access through Murphy Oil's driveway. And their legal access, they argue, is the 10-foot strip on the rear of, of the property, which goes behind four residential multi-unit properties. And I know that some of you have, have seen the property and you may have noticed that there isn't even a driveway there. It's been on paper for years, it's 10 feet wide and it's going to go through the yards of these four multi-unit properties. You've also may have taken note that where the petitioner's property meets Murphy Oil's driveway, there was, there's anywhere from a 4 to a 6 drop-off. And there is one, somebody had built an access, that access was built in 2023, not by the owner of that property, by the way, but by the owner of the house budding it because they had to fix some septic issues. So anytime prior to 2023, there was never an access there. And as I say in our paper, it was, it's been a wooded lot for years, and I believe that it is within the purview of this board to, to at least see that there's no indicia of ownership through Murphy Oil's driveway. If you look at the presentation, the submission that we got this evening-
Sir, we didn't, we didn't receive that. I know that our plan have received it, we don't have that and it's not in our record for here, so it won't be for record tonight, so. I, I know you keep on referencing it, but we don't have it.
Well, if, if it is going to be an issue at some point, we would appreciate the opportunity to come back and, and address it.
That's, that's fine, but I, that piece of paper, whatever they submitted on tonight, is not, is not in record, I'm not gonna take it in record. I'm not going to take it in record tonight either. Okay?
So again, as I said, I'm not going to go through the whole, the argument-
And I appreciate that. Like I said, I, I'm going to get into my direction for the board and my direction for the present owner, and then we can go from there. And if you disagree with how we go forward tonight, there's always an appeals process for either people.
Well, again, as I always have a problem trying to get the last word in. Again, if in fact it's a futile effort, again, we would hope we wouldn't have to go that route. Thank you.
I agree.
I have a quick, quick question. Are you referring to that dotted line that's up top? Is that the 10-foot? Okay.
There's a 10-foot easement that runs from there all the way back out to Morton Street. Across the back of the property, yeah, okay, that's all.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood it, that's all.
And it, it just, as a matter of fact, it's a utility easement, it's not a driveway easement.
Yep. Okay.
Yep. So anybody else have anything they want to say tonight? Paul?
Well, I, it's just, I'm caught between a rock and a hard place here, because it's like on one side, this piece of property is useless to no one but Murphy Oil. It's been sold, someone has ownership of the property, and now they're, you know, in limbo with it.
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, they're in limbo with it. It's, in fact, that's between them and the, and Murphy Oil, whoever else needs to be. We have two things before us tonight. One is a site plan review, which is a standard site plan review, we can go through that. And we have a special permit for the truck use. So a special permit would take a full vote for us to be able to allow them to go from a 3/4-ton truck up to the size trucks that they have in that property. And then, like I say, the site plan, the site plan review. I'm going to ask the owner if they want us to vote tonight yes or no, or to extend this until such time that you can resolve your issues with the owner. That would be my recommendation, but that's up to you guys, that's, you know. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I've spoken with Mr. Caesar, and at this juncture, and I apologize if the board did not our submission, we would respectfully move to withdraw this application without prejudice at this time. With a site plan and special permit.
Thank you very much. So we're, we're going to end this, that's it? Okay. They're going to withdraw?
To withdraw without prejudice.
Withdraw without prejudice.
As to the site plan and special permit applications.
So can, we have a motion to accept this withdrawal?
I make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
And I'll need that in writing tomorrow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item number four. A new public hearing will be held to petition of the applicant property owner, SN Square Realty, Inc., 810 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass., for a site plan review under section 10.6 to renovate the former Stoughton Trust Company building into a mixed-use four-story building consisted of retail and offices in the basement and second floor and 12 residential units, four loft units and eight one-bedroom units in the remainder of the building. In addition, a minor site modification, including parking proposal and adjacent lot within a parking easement. The applicant is represented by JD Civil, Inc. of Norton, Mass. The property is located 810 Washington Street and 19 Park Street, Stoughton, Mass., 02072. Assesses map 54, lots 371 and 373 in the Stoughton Center District Core SCD-C zoning district. Can I have the applicant and/or his representatives come up, please?
Thank you. Kyle Tornow of Composite Design Studio, providing the architectural design services.
I'm Sadiq Agnaz, I'm representing the owner of the property.
Okay.
So we're apologizing that our civil engineer is over at the Calcom, so he should be here momentarily. We were also anticipating that Greg from Driscoll was going to be on the Zoom call. But we can proceed, we understand some of the comments, and we can do the presentation. Hopefully, they can complete it when they arrive, if that works for the board.
So do we want to, do you want to bring up the site plan? We can kind of go through- Excuse me?
Yeah, if you've got another project to do first, then we'll wait, give it a little bit more time. And we can postpone until they're completed, and then we'll jump onto our project.
Okay.
Excellent.
So at this point in time, we're going to temporarily suspend the, the public hearing on item number four. We're going to go to item number five. New public hearing will be held at the petition of the applicant's Stoughton Planning Board to consider and hear a public comment on proposed amendments to the Town of Stoughton zoning bylaws, and will provide an establishment for the, of the new section 7.2 accessory dwelling units to establish regulations, including changes in sections 3.1.4 table of use regulations and section 11.0 definitions.
Thank you, Mr. - Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seems like these zoning amendments never seem to go away.
You keep finding them making them.
Huh? I normally, obviously, we held these hearings in January and we actually reopened it and made a minor change. The accessory dwelling unit bylaw, I just apologize in that, you know, it's a fluid situation with the state. They finally, their regs, they finally have model regs. They offered for the Attorney General's Office to give us a review. You have that, that's in the, the one, and I printed them. It's in color in the text edit format with the notes. I've reviewed with town council. There are some questions that the AG had, which, you know, are clearly answerable. You know, they, they mentioned the, you know, under the first one. I, I don't think I really need to go through all of them. It's, it was like, well, do we allow a special? We don't allow single-family in any other district with a special permit. So our use regulations will be fine. And so in reviewing the Attorney General's comments with our town council, we are recommending three changes. One is under the seven, and I, and I printed the copies in color so you can see it, because I did it in red, so it would be. There can be really no design review unless you have definitive, in a historic district, you have defined standards. If that section that says that shall be in similar character and compatible materials with the principal dwelling would be in conflict with state law, so we're recommending that be removed.
And it's unfortunate, because that's, I actually saw one of these and, I think it was in Newton I was in, and what an ugly ADU they had in their backyard. Did not fit the area at all, and it was just a mess. And I said, this is what we're going to allow, this is awful.
Yeah, but design review, you, you can have design review in a historic district, provided, actually, that you have objective design review standards. Most, and, and they, in the training, they said, a design review standard of historical character of the neighborhood is not, is not an objective. It's not, I'm letting you know. I, I'm just letting you know. So we're recommending taking that out. The other thing we're recommending taking out is you can't treat it differently from the principal dwelling. We left in the section under the 7.2.5 about the 1 and 1/2 stories and 20 feet. That's our accessory structure requirement. We've kind of gotten guidance that, that, you know, you have to treat it as a principal, you know, principal dwelling. So we're recommending taking that out. However, we feel that the one above, the 10 feet and 15 feet setbacks is a reasonable regulation. It's about half of the principal dwelling and it, but it is more than our accessory sheds and garages. We feel there is some gray area there. We feel that we want to leave it in, and we want to argue that point with the, with the Attorney General's Office. If they, if they strike it out, they strike it out, but we feel we should leave it.
I mean, I guess in the same token, if we have other items here, if we don't believe that we should strike something out, let them, let the Attorney General strike it out later.
Correct.
After it gets voted.
Yeah. I, I want to try to minimize, here's my goal. I want to minimize going to town meeting in May, getting this redlined by the stricken down certain sections and having to come back in October, November.
I agree, but I don't, I think as a board or as a town even, that we should have to agree to something that we may not be, may be detrimental to the town.
Yeah.
And I, I'm, that's my point, and if the-
Number four could be a gray area, we feel it's not.
I don't, I, I mean, number four probably, yeah, number two is where my, is where my issues-
Number, number two, that will get stricken. We, we're 100, we are 100% positive on that. We, and I just attended the, the model bylaw training yesterday, and that got reinforced. So, and then the only other thing is in the definition. The definition needs to be what they had, we added and may be imposed by the planning board. That, that definition, we added, that was added in. That should be stricken, because the definition needs to comply with state law, and that does not.
What doesn't, what doesn't apply to?
Because the definition, the definition is not what's in state law. You, the planning board added and may be imposed by the planning board.
So we can only use the exact language that's in the state law, even though that that can be ambiguous?
Well, the definition is pretty, the definition is what's codified in state law.
Even though it's ambiguous. And it's been ambiguous for many, for many towns, and many people have looked at it through across the state, and it's very, it's very well-known it's ambiguous.
As your professional staff, I, I know, I know this isn't personal, I'm not taking it that way, and I know it's frustrating, and we can go back and forth. This is my professional, after consulting with town council, this is my professional and his professional opinion, how we should modify what is already been submitted for the warrant.
Now, if there's something in there, and we say, let's put it in, let the state knock it out, if they so desire, does that still have to go before town meeting to get re-approved again?
Yes.
Correct. Just like, just like one of the bylaws now, we, we have to change the use table because of the state permitted uses that we denied?
Yeah.
So, yes. So it's really about, I want to minimize, as the town's professional staff in this, I feel very, I feel very confident that the three things that we have highlighted here will be removed. Town council feels they will be removed. He's got 14, Brian's got 14 communities he's dealing with right now. And the setback issue, we feel confident that we can make an argument for reasonableness. The, but the design, this language was quoted by MAPC and Executive Office of Livable Communities, because it's come up in other ones. This was specifically discussed yesterday in their webinar, that that is not an objective standard and it's not in a historic district. So-
The entire town of Stoughton's historic.
Huh?
The entire town of Stoughton's historic.
I'm historic.
I know. So, I know. I'm trying to present this to you.
I know. Bill, I, I appreciate your professional opinion. Doesn't mean I need to do agree with it, I just appreciate your professional opinion.
Well, I, I, I think you're frustrated with the law.
I, I, yeah.
Yeah. But you know what I'm going to tell you that I see, and Dan, you're a contractor. And we have our first one. I was told, I went to, I've been to, I go to the building commissioner, and I think I told you this at the last hearing, that with the building code detached, the building commissioner said about $300, $100 a foot. And I went, 300 times?
Nine.
Nine?
27, 200 and 200.
I was like, 270,000. Guess how much the estimate for the first one that was submitted for two days ago in the building department was, was estimate for the construction of a detached? $280,000. So the, those building folks were pretty much on target. So, you know, at that price, I ju, I just don't see a lot of these happening. I see the conversion, and I've even been told by the building folks, and you're in the trades, that the conversion of the room above the garage, the basements and all of those are anywhere, are probably upwards easily about $75,000. Because the first thing that you have to do is you have to spend over $15,000 on a separate panel because of the building code requirements. Right off the bat, you just can't add a couple wires to your existing panel and go due to all the building code requirements. So, and I'm not going to debate the building code requirements, but it's, it's these, and, and it has nothing to do with zoning, it's the building code and whatever.
What about, is it also a separate water meter?
No, no. No, you can't regulate those. So, and I don't think the town wants to have, have put in all separate water meters and all of that.
Any other questions on the board?
So it's-
Just that, when you, when you present this, I mean, that, that particular fact that you just brought up needs to be stressed, so that people will immediately see that, you know, maybe this thing of number two being striked out.
Well, they won't know it's striked out.
They're not going to know.
They, they won't know it's striked out.
But I think it needs to be, you know, people need to be comfortable with the fact that we're not, people aren't just going to be hiring rent-a-shed and putting it in their backyard and calling it a ADU, you know?
Correct, and, and we, we can talk about that. We can talk about, you know, and I'm sure there's going to be questions like that, you know?
Well, I thought that was really important.
Yeah, can you do a trailer?
What you just said right there is-
It has to be a permanent structure, so like a mobile home, you're going to have to put in a, a 30 or 40,000 dollar, a $30,000 foundation.
Right.
So-
So those are the key.
Those are building code requirements, by the way.
So anyway, so at this point in time, we need to take a vote for recommendation for or against the changes that are in this.
To insert this into the war-
To insert this into the town warrant for the September, uh, for April, I'm sorry.
May.
May.
You'll have to hurry.
No, I'm, I'm, I have to do it, I have to do it another day.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to insert as printed.
To approve the revisions?
Revision as submitted.
Okay. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Majority.
Sorry, but that's-
No, I-
You know, the state's going to, they're going to keep reaching into zoning and, and everything they can-
Well, their, their whole idea is they want to get rid of town zoning, they want to get rid of local zoning.
Exactly.
They want to become state zoning. That is exactly her long-term plan.
No, they don't want any single family-
Mr. Chairman, I believe the engineer is here for item number four. And I will let you know that we need to have to adjourn no later than 8:15 to leave the building.
Oh.
Ooh.
15 minutes?
No, 45 minute, I'm sorry, 8, I'm sorry, 8:45. Yeah. The building closes at-
It better not take 45 minutes.
The building closes at 9.
Well done.
You kind of read, you read this already, right? So do we have to, you don't have to read the whole thing all over again?
I'm not reading at all. I just said we suspended it, we're going to open it back up again.
Okay. Motion to reopen the-
No, we don't, we didn't vote on it, so we just, it's, we're just going to unsuspend it at this point. Okay. So go ahead, you can kind of explain the project and we go forward.
All right. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. Just to introduce myself, Josh White from JDE Civil, representing SN, SN Realty Square, and Sudhir Agunath, and here is...
Kyle Torino, the Composite Design Studio.
So, basically, what we have in front of you tonight for site plan review is a proposed conversion of the existing building at 810 Washington Street. It's basically a big office building in the center of town, and the applicant is looking to convert that into a mixed-use development with 12 residential units spread throughout the building, and two retail and office space. Currently, the building is two to three stories, it varies. It's, as you know, it's a, an older building in town, and there is proposed additions vertically to convert it into a four-story building. The basement in the second story would be the home of the retail and office space, and eight of the one-bedroom units would be on the third and fourth floors, and four loft units with mezzanines would be on the remaining floors. We know this, so this property is located, as I mentioned, in downtown Stoughton, in the Stoughton Center District, in the core sub-district, which we know is fairly new. I believe the planner said there's only been a couple applications under that zone, so going through the bylaws and requirements for this, for this project was a little tricky. So, I'll just jump right into it. So, as you can see on this plan up on the screen, basically what we've got is on the 810 property, which is a small triangular piece towards the corner of Washington and Park, the existing building is going to remain the same footprint, no changes to the footprint. We are adding some walkways, modifying the walkways, that sort of thing to the entrances on the Park Street side. The elevator in the building is on that side, so that's kind of going to be the, is the main entrance on the corner and on the Park Street side. Right now, currently, we have a 12-foot by 3-foot wide concrete pad, which is going to be for the proposed trash enclosure. It's got a five-foot-high brick wall on the Park Street side to kind of blend it in with the brick face of the building, and it's going to have a fence of material to be determined along the, kind of between the two properties to enclose this trash enclosure. New utilities to the building, including a transformer, new fire service. We got some preliminary comments from engineering and DPW, and they would like the sewer service, existing sewer service out to Park Street, camera to verify its condition, size, material, those kinds of things. So, once that's done, we'll be able to see if any modifications are required based on the proposed design flow of the building. One of the kind of more urban, I guess, requirements for the zoning for this Stoughton Center District is the parking requirements. Basically, from what we've gathered, it only really is worried about residential. There's no required spaces for office or commercial. So, based on the 12 units that we've got proposed within this building, we need, it's half a space per unit, so that gives us six spaces which are required. And obviously, because this building basically takes up the entire lot, there's no space for onsite parking. So, we are proposing an easement between the 810 property, the 810 Washington Street property, and the neighboring property of 19 Park Street, which the applicant does own as well. And we have six parking spaces shown there, including one accessible space, within a utility and access easement between the two properties. Like I mentioned, we did get some comments from engineering, and one of the comments they did make was that the parking lot exceeds the ADA requirements for the 2% slope in the parking lot. So, we are going to have to look at where we can position the, the parking spaces in the property to achieve that, and if we need to, whatever modifications grading-wise, we'll, we'll make that, make that happen. That's... Another comment that came in was having to do with the existing dumpster that is located on 19 Park Street. On this plan, you have, we did not call out it being relocated. We, as it is right now, it's just being removed altogether, which we'll revise. Basically, we're going to move it to the other side of the building temporarily, until this trash enclosure for 810 is constructed. And the remaining parking spaces for that, on the 19 Park Street property, will remain, I believe there's, I believe it's adjusted dentist office now. So, under the, the Center District, it doesn't require any parking spaces, but we do have a lot of parking spaces shown on that property. That's, that's kind of a quick summary of the site plan. We are, another, one of the comments was from the, I believe it was the Board of Health, about potentially needing a variance with the enclosure being too close to the property line setback. They have a 15-foot setback, so we're going to have to look at that and talk to them, see if we can make changes to the plan, or if we just need to go in front of them for a variance. And if there's any other options for dumpsters and trash removal for this property, whether it's bigger cans, larger dumpster, different location, that kind of, that kind of thing, we're all actively working on coming up with a better solution for that. Also, next to, on the Park Street side, next to the dumpster enclosure and the wall there, we do have a bike rack shown. We may pick a better location for that, but I just wanted to point out that it is shown there. So, we are providing some votes for alternative transportation for this residential and office development. I think that's kind of it for an intro. Take comments from the board and the staff members here.
Go to staff members next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things I'm going to start out with is the plans are very difficult to read, even for Craig and myself. You've got a lot of existing conditions things, you've got a lot of extraneous information that's not needed for a site plan. You're just trying to do way too much. We would like to have what's more of a site layout plan that shows the information that's necessary, but, you know, it's, you know, I, I think hopefully you can understand exactly what we want. If it's hard for us to read, if it's hard for us to read, it's going to be very difficult for a lot of the people on the board to read.
You just, you need an existing conditions and a new, and a new plan.
And more of a, more of a layout, and then you have your utilities. You, it appears that you have eliminated the dumpster. You did reply that you're going to want to use 50-gallon whatever. I, I do not know if, you will need to provide evidence from a trash hauler and documentation on, you know, how that, you know, we have not seen anything like that. So, you need to provide, you know, how that's done, how do they pick it up? You've got the, you know, if there's cars parked all along the thing, where are they going to, how are they going to get it, you know, during snow times? We will have to talk to the Board of Health as well to see if these 50-gallon totes are acceptable. I think that depending on some of your businesses, there's certain requirements. You know, obviously, I know you don't have any food service in here, so, you know, I know that that triggers other things. It was recommended at the pre-app, and it is still recommended that you consider, instead of going through an elaborate, you know, construction of this, which is outside of the norm, is, you know, you are looking at potentially a phase two to redevelop 19 Park. Is it that you put a traditional dumpster, if it meets the requirements, and you, and discuss with the Board of Health, one dumpster that services both properties? I did mention that at the pre-app. It clearly, you wanted to go in a different direction. And then ultimately, if you build the second, you, the, the parking structure underneath or whatever design, will, you can incorporate all of that. You do, we do need to have discussions with the Board of Health regarding, you know, can the apartment uses, the business uses, and then just be forewarned, you know, if you rent to XYZ business, they require a separate type of disposal, then you need to know that, so you don't lease to them or, so, but we feel that one dumpster is far easier, and then, and then you'd obviously have to look at screening and whatnot. It just, you know, I don't mean to talk about trash all night, but it was a sort of thing. Yeah, Kyle, and you need to talk to the microphone.
Question was, one dumpster means that it's all trash, no separation or recycle?
Well, I would look at doing a recycling and a recycling dumpster and a, whatever the hauler requires, and then a regular, and another dumpster.
Right.
And you could look at the sizes that you need, because if two and a half yards doesn't require, you know, doesn't require all the permits and the setbacks, it's the bigger ones that do. So, it's the four yards and up, I believe. So, look at the dumpster regs on, it's rather ironic. We've got our own stuff on site plan and screening them and that, but then there's like concrete pad. The Board of Health's got some specific dumpster regs as well. Work with us on that. I did, talked about the site plan. The ADA spaces, Craig can go over that. What were the, the, you have the police department's letter. They don't like the parking requirement in the Stoughton Center District, and they will continue to go on record regarding the half a space and the issues. The water and sewer was pretty specific. They very rarely comment. Worked with them. Looked like they wanted water service from a different area and different things. And so, I'll turn it over to Craig.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, you touched on the, the location of the existing, or the proposed handicap space. The existing grade there is, is greater than 2%. I think if you, you might have to put a small retaining wall at the backside of the sidewalk, which kind of leans into another suggestion that we have in the letter, and that's to kind of close up that curb cut. It's really wide, I think it's like 90 feet or something like that. And I think if you were to provide a 24-foot-wide access drive off of the back of the striped spaces on the south side, go 24 feet from there, it'll close off that entrance, but also provide, I think it was room for another one or two parking spaces on street. So, that would be helpful as well, right? So, this parking is tight in that area. And additionally, it would bring your entrance drive further away from the stoplight. So, you know, you've got more chance of avoiding the queue backed up by a red light, so. The other thing I just want to mention is that the existing sewer connection, since we're changing this use, it's a pretty old connection. We do need to have that camera to verify that it's adequate. I don't even know what size it is. I tried to look for the tie card on this thing, and couldn't figure out what size the, the service is. So, we just need to see if, it might be an eight-inch for all I know, but...
That was for back, back in the 70s.
Yeah, it's probably really low, small size, so it may need to be upgraded. So, we at least need to investigate that a little further. Other than that, you know, it's tight with the parking layout. You're doing the best you can, I recognize that. So, we'd look to see, you know, a little bit more refinement with the handicap space, and maybe some adjustments with the dumpster in the next round. But I think that's about all I have on that.
Okay. So, I've got a question. I'm looking at your East Side A202. You have a roof line at 41 foot nine, and then you have some sort of metal fascia and additional roofs and a clock that seems to be of substantial height above that roof line. The height of the buildings in this area are allowed, are only allowed to be at 45 feet.
So, the design intent is that, as we discussed with the building department, the roof line on the sides of the building, where the eve is, are at the height restriction. There is a little bit of the curve that does go slightly higher than that, but that was my understanding within the qualifications of the building department, that one-third of that can be a little bit higher, just at that point of the curve. In regard to the elevator, that's where we're putting the machine room, so as a, as a utility element, that's why that is rising up higher.
I don't know where the building department come up with the one-third. I was on the board that wrote that, that zoning code.
Mm-hmm.
And we didn't, we did, there was, there was never anything in, in that discussion when we did that.
We can look to clarify that as we move forward with the development of the design of the building itself, to make sure that we're...
Don't get me wrong, I'm very happy that this building's happening, I'm very happy that the design is going in. I just want to be sure, due to the fact that when we did this zoning code, that 45-foot height restriction was a very hot and fast number with everything we were doing. So, I want to make sure that we're not overstepping our bounds, and if we have to go to over 45 feet, and we have to go to a special permit, there's requirements within that code to be able to go to a special permit to do that.
Excellent.
So, you know, we have to, I just want to make sure we're following with what we're doing. And like I say, I like, I like the building, I like the design, but I want to be sure that we're following with it, because we're, we're real early on, we're only a couple of buildings into this, this what's happening in there, and it's going to be looked at heavily when we're doing it.
Correct.
Okay. So, Bill, go ahead. So, the, the elevator shaft is one of the items that's above, and then what's this other item? There's a clock tower?
Adjacent, that is the staircase access to the roof itself.
And that's the clock tower that you're doing?
And that's, so we've kind of taken the elevator shaft, because we're putting the machine room on top to be a vertical pole cable, we get a little bit taller, and so we wanted to make that a feature for the town by taking the technical needs of the elevator shaft, and then doing something poetic with it architecturally for the community as well. In this case, putting a clock on two, two sides of that tower. In this case, putting a clock on two, two sides of that tower.
Where are your HVAC units and other mechanical units gonna go?
They will be on the more or less white surface, they will be far enough away from the edge that you will not be able to see them. We only need 12 of them, actually, we need 14 of them, and they stack up nicely right in the middle of the roof, so that won't be visible from a distance.
What size are they gonna be?
About four foot by two and a half feet.
How high?
Yeah, about, about, well, it'll be on a small platform, so at that point, they'll probably be about four feet tall.
You're looking at heat pumps?
Yeah, they're all heat pumps, yeah.
I, I think you, you may wanna do some perspective elevations for that, only for the fact as if somebody else did something similar to this in town, and they had to remove all of their rooftop units.
Easily done.
Work.
Yeah, we can show you exactly what that will look like in terms of a height, and with the, from a couple of different streets. View advantage points, we can look at it for, for you guys and present that. Go ahead, anybody else?
Okay, the parking spots, are those gonna be assigned parking spots for the people that live there, work there?
Yes, there'll be parking spots that would be assigned.
Yeah. All right. And any of those spots, will those be connected for, will be connections for vehicle charging?
We have not discussed putting in charging stations yet for the lot at this point in time. We're actually anticipating something along those lines for the future development of 19, but not at this point. So we're waiting for that next phase of the work to then take those kind of aspects into consideration. We don't have a final design yet for 19.
So.
Go ahead. The other question I have is where you have that triangle shape there in front of the building, is that part of your property?
No, it's not.
It's town, okay. A while back, I'm going back like 10 years ago, the town talked about putting one of these signs, like the, with what? The message board.
A kiosk of sort?
That's planning on going at Town Hall.
Right, but what happens is, they have, again, direction that you're coming from, the one at Town Hall, you may not see, but if you head towards this building here.
But, you know, we don't know what the town's doing, so I wanna.
Is the town very welcome at some point, talk about putting one of those message boards in front of the building?
Okay.
Okay.
Disgusting.
Don't be surprised, that's all I'm saying.
Question for you on the parking.
Hope it looks nice.
Oh, they look terrible. Question for you on the parking. You have the parking on its separate lot, is that what, the way I'm understanding this?
Yes, through an easement, yes.
Right. The ease, so it's gonna be, there has to be an ease, and just not a, just not a lease agreement, there's gonna actually be an easement on the property? D'd easement?
Yeah, the property owner, Sadiar owns both lots.
I understand that, but it could always be sold in the future.
But we required, we required an easement.
So it's gonna put an easement on that property.
Yeah, and then if it develops.
So it's gonna be a beat, by meets and bounds, a definitive easement, not just a.
Right, and then if it develops in the future, then they'll remove the easement, and then all the parking for this project and the, and the other one will be, needs to be accommodated.
Which would equally be an easement at that time for any reconfiguration.
Yeah.
Because it would have to be, as you pointed out, written in, that whoever owns that property, they're still bound to provide the parking for A10.
Right, it's not just written in, but I mean, it's a, an easement is something that has meets and bounds to get definitive area, as opposed to, you know, an agreement that says we just got six spaces here somewhere. So my point is, is if we're gonna put an easement in, and then we're gonna change the easement afterwards?
If it's required because of the configuration, then yes, the easement would be changed. Right now, because of the lot situation, we have an open parking lot, we're gonna designate certain spots. Once we have a new design to be built on 19 Park, that will be reevaluated and assessed, and the requirements to meet the A10 parking will be incorporated into the new development on 19.
And Mr. Chairman, this, another thing that could be done is, if the second phase is done, they could just do an A and R perimeter plan, remove the lot line and, and have extinguished the easement, and have, there's all sorts of options.
Right, I was just thinking, they may wanna keep it as two separate lots, that was all.
Yeah.
But I agree, you could go in A and R, but if, from a business standpoint of view, he may wanna keep it as two separate lots.
That's if and when Phase Two joins in with this building.
Exactly, let's just deal with one right now, go on.
We're looking at this as if Phase Two never gets built.
That's the way we have to look at it.
Right.
I'm just curious, is there still a bank vault in there?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you, are you making that a unit?
Making it to a bedroom?
Are you really?
Yeah, we recently removed that wall, it's like a 16,000 pounds, it looks almost empty.
How are you gonna get a window?
Yeah, we recently removed that wall like last month, it took us almost like seven days, like five people, the crew came from North Carolina, they're specialized in removing these walls, so, it cost me like almost 25,000 on it, so.
Technically, there are three vaults. There's one in the basement, there's one on the first floor that had the big heavy door.
That's the one I'm familiar with.
And then there's one upstairs as well. The one that's upstairs is currently just like a storage room for the salon that's there. The one that's in the basement, we will be using as a conference room, meeting room for the business use that's gonna be allocated in the basement. And the first floor one, bedroom, will open up the back and put a window on the backside. You'll feel very safe and secure when you sleep in there at night.
And just wanna let you know about the commercial spaces. Currently, there is a Brazilian consulate or the community center is on the third floor. They would like to move down into the basement floor when this, this project is done. Up until then, they're gonna be renting the space in the next building. And also, there is a salon in the second floor, and they wanna continue, once this project is done, like they wanna continue, come back. So, these two people will be most probably staying as they are.
Does that elevator go all the way to the, will, is the plan?
Yes, it's currently going all the way to the basement, and it's gonna be remain that, and we're gonna be adding that to the fourth floor as well. The new floor that's gonna be there, it's gonna be five stops.
So it'll be a five stop, but the fourth floor will still have steps up to get onto the fourth floor. So the fourth floor will not have wheelchair access, but we will have handicap units on the first floor that you can come right into the front door, and you'll have access on the third floor as well for the units there.
And going back to the parking spots, is there any, well, it's go by code, they have to have one or two spots? One? Okay. Question either.
One designated for the handicap.
Is this rooftop gonna be used eventually as a, as access for the tenants, or?
No, we're not intending that use. We hope on the future ones, on the 19 Park Street, to be able to give some kind of a private space, depending on what the design is, but whatever the design is, we hope to give rooftop access there.
Well?
I have one quick question on the handicap parking. If the building is fully rented out, and there is nobody that requires the handicap parking, but that's a parking spot, how does the community view its use? When it's designated for the building, but there is nobody who is handicapped living?
Visitors to that building that could actually be handicapped, that's why you'd have to have that requirement to have.
Because you have businesses there.
You really, you could business board, or you have good people that need to get in the building that could be handicapped.
So the potential is that the tenant that lives in the building that's being visited by somebody would vacate that spot to allow their colleague to park there when they're visiting. That way, that spot is being used as opposed to the street.
That's really more of a, a parking management issue with the town, I would think.
Yeah, I kinda see that as being problematic, you know, if the, if law enforcement drives by, sees a handicap, a non-handicap placard, you know, parked in that space.
True.
Then they don't know if it's the resident who is designated to park there, or if it's just somebody parking there illegal, so.
Could that be, and I'm sorry to bring this up, but it's an interesting point, I know there's a concern about the .5 per, and now because of the handicap, we're actually doing worse for the community? Is there an opportunity that a placard could be made that the town recognizes that that is an assigned, it's not a public handicap park?
I don't think the ADA addresses a situation like that.
The handicap unit is one of the.
You're going into a theoretical discussion, that's, that's.
Handicap space is one of the six spaces they're providing?
It is.
It is one of them, so.
That's why I'm bringing that up.
That's how the code reads.
Yep.
And so you, what I find troubling is, is that there's more than six units, I don't see how you're assigning the five spaces, you know?
Well, here's another option, is that that handicap space could be designated on the other parcel, since you're sharing, so it could be for the business.
And if that's what can work, then we would designate that the handicap is for the current business use, and we would show the parking requirement for A10, separate from the requirement of the handicap on Park Street.
Well, your engineer's writing that note right now.
I know, it's a good solution to, if that's what, we can do that, then that's great.
Yeah, I, I think that, that fits within the regulations.
And I think that that fits within our, any future plans as well.
Yeah.
For 19 Park as we go to develop.
It can be on the 19 Park Street law.
That's excellent, that's a good, that's a good way to compromise and make that work.
I understand where you're coming from, but I don't.
Thank you.
Anything else? So, you have some recommendations on them, you know, you're gonna make some modifications. I'm assuming at this point you ask for continuance?
Yes.
How much time do you think you'll need?
I think we need to find time to speak with the Board of Health to clarify. We have a solution, we actually have potentially two solutions for addressing the garbage item. I think that's the more complicated. We would also need a bit of time to do the survey of the septic system.
Sewer.
Sewer system, sorry.
So, that can be done after you're through with this process, so we can make that a condition of approval, we've done that in the past with other.
All right, that's, that's good to know. So that can be conditional, is there any other aspects that can be conditional, so that we're only, I think, asking for a continuance because of the trash?
There are some plan revisions that need to.
You need site layout, site layout, parking.
Planings need to be redone, yeah. And we need to come to a conclusion on what we're doing about the height of the building.
All right, we'll work to clarify that.
But even it's not, I mean, that's, I gotta look, I gotta go back and see where we're at. I mean, it's not, Jack isn't the one who wrote, who was part of this call, it's not even a building code issue.
I thought the equipment was exempt.
It's not the equipment, the roof is higher than the 45 feet. The curve of the roof, that, that round roof you're putting on there right now is higher than 45 feet.
Yeah, we can show you the numbers, I'll clarify the numbers. It should be that the leading edges on both the left and the right side are below, from the front of the building is below that height, and then it rides up so that it's only about, I think, 18 inches above that line. I just don't have it memorized, it's been a little while since I got that.
I, I can ask Jack how he determined height, it might have been some sort of average, I remember there was some sort of discussion.
It wasn't average, that's correct.
I remember there was some sort of discussion that he had.
But they, I mean, even, yeah, but even so, we got the stair tower, the elevator tower, which are all visible, are still higher than 45 feet.
Right.
That's correct, so.
And those are all visible elements, it's not like they're inside somewhere where you're not gonna see them, or they're shielded somehow.
That's correct. We're looking for that as a roof access, non-habitable, as part of the function.
I agree, but it's still part of the building.
That's correct.
So, I mean, that's, the other thing is, I wanna just take some time and look at it, but I, we may have to go for a variance at that 45.
Fair enough.
Isn't that a special permit?
It would be a special permit variance, there's a requirement, there's, there's requirements for special permit to go higher than the height and to go to another story. So if you're going to a fifth story, or the height of the building, there's requirements for that special permit to do that, within, within the 9.3.
Right, because we're within that district where it could be on the fifth floor, can't have that additional height.
Right. So to have that, there was specific requirements that get you there.
Fair enough, and we've reviewed some of those specific requirements before.
Well, we discussed those requirements for 19 Park, you know, the public benefit in this, but i- if it's strictly the utility things in this, you might be able to look at doing it as a special permit to figure it out.
It's a special permit, we may need to.
So, so we may get through, almost through the site plan and say, oh, you need to apply for a special permit, and then we can catch it up.
I'd say, or we get it applied for, before the next meeting, or we just open up another meeting at the next meeting with the special permit.
Yeah, it would be nice to do that, resolve all of the questions prior to the next meeting, so that way we're not asking for a continuance or having any other hiccups.
On the staircase going to the, to the elevator, I'm looking at the, the rails and all that. Could that somehow be somewhat closed in, just as, so you don't see a staircase?
I'm sorry, I missed a question.
On the staircase going up to the clock tower, the elevator utility room?
It's an existing staircase. We have an outside stoop that goes to the side entrance, we're gonna modify and improve that, so that.
To this here.
Yeah, okay, so.
Because if you're coming in from this direction, you see a staircase there.
I, I will do renderings, further renderings, to show you exactly how much you do see from the street. I'll make sure I get proper photographs, I do, you can see the, I don't know from my presentation that you have right now, the photo montage work that I do, we'll take the existing photo, map out the exact massing, and I'll be able to show you exactly what you will be able to see of that staircase going up. That staircase is something that's coming up from the existing. I moved it where it is, instead of just taking the staircase and continuing vertically, to not raise the staircase along the street edge vertically. That would have been the easier thing to do, is just take the footprint of the staircase and go up. I purposefully already moved it where it is to avoid it being seen from the street as best as possible.
Okay, so, just to, just so we understand where we're at. 9.3.8 increased height special permit, allowable building height may be increased to the discretion of the planning board through granting of an increased height special permit in accordance with the provisions of this subsection. The town of Stoughton offers this special permit as an option, and it shall not be interpreted to otherwise limit any right development offered by the special, the SCD. The requirements of the increased height special permit, in order to be considered for increased height special permit approval, the applicant shall comply with the following. The building under review must be located in the core district, which it is, the increased height cannot be more than five stories of 55 feet, which you're fine. Any portion of the building above four stories of 45 feet, the lesser of the two, shall be stepped back at least 10 feet from the primary architectural plane of the building facade. When located on a corner lot, each side of the additional story that faces the roadway must comply with this design element. That's where we're gonna get stuck.
Yeah, everything's gotta be pushed back.
That's true, and my understanding is that that's for habitable space on the.
No, 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 building height, they never set habitable space. The building code references habitable, habitable space or roof line, this code specifically does not, for the specific reason that when we did this, that we weren't looking to have a massive wall along the roadways, we wanted to be sure that the building mass wasn't imposed on the hallway, on the, on the roadway.
Right. So we'll look at that further, as I've noted, that was the move that I've made to prevent that from happening by stepping in the staircase the way that it has, is shown.
No, I, I see the staircases, but your elevator tower.
Can you, can you, can somebody see the upper image on the screen? Thank you.
It's the elevator, see the elevator tower?
I know. Right, so there's the elevator tower, and then, so this is up to the regular height, and to get that roof up here, that staircase, this piece here, I, I didn't just wire that string up. Keep this down at the required elevation. So it steps in, and it steps back away, and rolling, and sliding the roof. You can see back here, this actually slopes back, and the elevations.
But the, the elevator shaft item itself.
I understand, the elevator shaft itself, does it function?
So, that is what, that mass is what we're talking, that's purposely what it was done. Now, obviously, it's a smaller piece of the building, and it's up, and, but the board has to be able to, to do it, and there was a specific language put in.
Right.
That said, we couldn't do it. So now I have to be able to basically look at and see if we can agree to change something, if we can.
Right.
I mean, I understand your restrictions, I understand what you're trying to do. You, what I have with the elevator shaft does, I mean, the stairway shaft does sit back, but the elevator shaft doesn't, so.
That's correct.
So we're coming up on time, I would assume, like, before, you're gonna ask for continuance?
I would recommend the, the April 24th date, because that way, I have to, if, if a special permit needs to be done, I have to get that into the paper by the second, so that gives us a couple of weeks to.
Beyond, sure. Beyond, sure.
To deal with this, you know, my drop dead date to email the paper is the second to make the 24th if we had to add that.
Okay.
So, can I have a motion for them to accept their continuance to the 24th?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you all very much.
Last item on the agenda is the meeting minutes. I did review those earlier. Karen, thank you very much. Anybody ever need a comment on the meeting minutes?
No.
Go ahead, Paul, you got something?
No, I read them all, they're good.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept them? Go ahead.
I did talk to Karen in regards to, when we talked about Martin Project, I made the statement that I am not related to Murphy, so I wanted that in the record. It was no connection with me and Murphy Oil. It was not in the, in the minutes.
Well, you can add that line in the minute.
I thought you were just being off the cuff with it.
Okay, that's fine.
It's a fact, but I just thought you were just.
Which week was, which week was that?
The, the only just, the minutes we just got.
No, we have two minutes, we're going to go February 27th to February 13th.
You're sure it's the longer one?
I think so, yes.
Yeah. I, I, I can, I can add that.
Yeah, like I said, I just.
I want to prove that I can add it, and I can talk to you where we can add it.
Other than that, anything?
I just want to know which meeting, which meeting minutes.
It's the 13th.
13th, okay. So, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from February 13th with the modification that's been requested?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from February 27th, 2025, as written?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.